Good evening and welcome to the school district of the city of Dearborn. Today is our regular scheduled meeting. Today is Monday, November 11th, 2024. It is seven o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Mosip?
Here.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Here.
Trustee Thorpe?
Here.
Trustee Watts? Here. President Berry?
Here. Next item, please.
Next item, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mr. Mohammed Abdul Fatah, Principal of Snow Elementary, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everybody. I am not the principal of Snow Elementary, but I am stepping in and I've got two incredible students, Zach and Sarah, who are fifth graders, who are going to come on up here. And they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Zach and Sarah, the show is all yours.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you. Sarah? There you go. Thank you. Good job. Here you go. Good job. Okay, thank you. One more round of applause.
Something to hang in your bedroom.
There you go. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
Next item, Superintendent's Update.
Good evening, everyone. Normally, we're starting with retirements, but this month, we don't have any. We always celebrate retirees, but this month, we don't have any retirees. So we're going to move right along into the agenda. Some real positive news to share. Just came back from Washington DC, representing the district, the students, the school community for STEM that received a national Blue Ribbon School. It was quite an honor to be there in Washington with schools from all over the nation. They give out 12 in the state of Michigan out of about 4,000 schools. We now have six, which is the most, tied for the most of any other district in that timeframe in Michigan at least. So we're very proud of that. And STEM is, you know, students coming from our whole district. Also, just that, you know, they give out 356 in the nation out of about 115,000 schools. So it is very limited company. And we were there. They're very strict on who can go, so they allow the superintendent, the principals, and a teacher. And so I was with Mr. Badu, Ms. Frezel, and Ms. Alcadre. And so we were there to represent. I wish we could have brought a student, but they don't allow it. And so, you know, congratulations to STEM and the entire school and to the board and everybody for working together as a team. If we could show our appreciation.
Congratulations.
And they will be here in December for a formal presentation. We always do that after the Blue Ribbon ceremonies. So I want to go on some other important information that we need to discuss. The football game a week ago between Dearborn High and Fortson, you know, was totally unacceptable, as most of us are aware of what happened. Each year, thousands of our student athletes gather a wide variety of athletics successfully hosted by our schools. Unfortunately, that night, it was not. The behaviors were unacceptable and individuals will be held accountable via appropriate due process. We will be using Miller Johnson firm, working with Ms. Ali Bazey, who's already been working very hard. She's been on top of it. We have some preliminary findings. Individuals have already been held accountable, but again, we need to make sure we're honoring due process of the law and our policies and procedures. Some things that occurred already are suspensions from games, playing on athletic teams. Some are suspensions in general from school, depending on the individuals. We also know that some may be facing consequences with the police and the prosecutor's office. So we're looking to take a look at ourselves to see where we need to improve. You know, the Student Code of Conduct and the Sports Code of Conduct does not stand for that, our core values. One of the things in our Athlete Code of Conduct, which is also in the MHSAA Code of Conduct, is display modesty and victory and graciousness in defeat in public. Win with humility, lose with grace. Do both with dignity. Avoid excessive celebrating and after play the end of the game. I'm going to ask Principal Farhat and Jabril and Executive Directors to come up as they also want to comment on, you know, what occurred and what actions we are taking. And the fact that we are one district, we need to work together, you know, to support everyone and to support proper conduct altogether.
Good evening, President Berry, trustees, and Dr. Malakow. I stand before you as the proud principal of Dearborn High School. And what happened on November 1st after our football game was a very unfortunate incident. As Dr. Malakow stated, we are holding people accountable and we are investigating. We are both working together with our admin teams along with the district to ensure that this type of thing doesn't happen again. I myself went to Fortson High School. I have three adult sons, one of whom is part of the Fortson football legacy. And this is not what Fortson or Dearborn High is about. And, you know, we will continue to work together to resolve all issues and ensure that this type of thing. We're looking at brainstorming some ideas to prevent this type of thing from happening in the future. And I'll turn it over to Principal Farhat.
All right. Thank you, Zainah. Good evening, President Berry, Dr. Malakow, and Board members. Just like Zainah mentioned, this is a totally unacceptable behavior. We're taking a look at all angles when it comes to identify all of those that are accountable for what occurred. That's not what we teach at Fortson High School. That is not what we teach in the Dearborn Public Schools. And yet unfortunately, the situation occurred. Dr. Malakow's team, Zainah's team, and my team were all working together, not only to hold people accountable, but also to learn from the situation. Take a look at some of our practices and maybe we can improve so that nothing like this happens again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that we are one community and, you know, that's the thing that we're focusing on. Just like I have roots at Dearborn High and at Fortson, many of the families that we have at both schools have roots at both schools. So we need to continue building positively on that.
I'd just like to add, definitely unfortunate situation. Saturday morning, I was on the phone with all of my colleagues. Nobody was happy. I know in Dearborn, that's not who we are. I know we can do better and we will do better. I trusted the administration and Dr. Malakow's team to do the right thing and looking forward to the reports and investigations. So thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Go ahead, continue with you.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'm going to move along and call up Ms. Turfee and Ms. Farage. We had our reception for our new teachers and we always want to recognize them. And Ms. Turfee did ask me to come over there, so I'm going to walk over to that side as you call up the teachers.
Good evening, President Berry, School Board Trustees, Superintendent, Dr. Malakow. Again, my name is Fay Turfee. I serve as a consultant for Dearborn Teacher University. It is with great honor and privilege today that I ask many of our new hires, some of our new hires, to come forward and introduce themselves to the district. And we applaud them and celebrate today with them for the great work they do for our district.
While they're coming up, good evening, everyone. I wanted to thank Ms. Turfee for the great job that she does supporting the new teachers. And I especially wanted to thank a group that's not with us tonight, who are the mentors, who truly take care of the newly hired professional staff, support them on a day-to-day basis. They're not with us today, but they may be hearing us. Thank you, mentors, as well.
Hello, it was a pleasure to meet you all. My name is Samantha Thornton. I'm an occupational therapist at William Ford and Oakman Elementary.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Artenay Milhouse and I'm the school psychologist at Snow and at William Ford.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Mickelson. I am the middle school art teacher at Lori.
Thank you and welcome.
Good evening, my name is Mohammed Ali Sala. I'm the physical education and health teacher at McCullough-UNIS in Stout. I have a couple of things I'd like to say. I'd like to thank the Dearborn Teacher University and Ms. Fay Turfee for making that transition for me, from getting hired to getting started smoothly and just fitting right in right away. So I appreciate that. And I'd also like to thank them for introducing me to the MDE Grow Your Own Grant, which gave me the opportunity to get reimbursed for all my classes that I took in college while I was subbing in the district. So I appreciate all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Hello, my name is Angelica Reese and I'm the Young Fives teacher at McCullough-UNIS.
Thank you, welcome.
Hello, my name is Hanedi Farha. I'm a teacher at Fortson High School.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Diana Cordy. I am the post-secondary SCI teacher at Howe.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Sultan Al-Assad and I teach leadership and life skills at McCullough-UNIS.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth, or Allah McHugh. I have the immense privilege of teaching STEAM at both Nowlin and Deval.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Samantha Fetterman. I'm an ASD teacher at Whitmore Bowles.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Albana Duhanjiu. I'm the Special Ed Resource teacher at Deval.
Thank you and welcome.
And I also want to thank Ms. Turfee and Ms. Farage. They do a great job with the university. And whenever you go to their sessions, you can tell it's very valuable. So thank you and again, congratulations. We have a couple of videos. We had Care to the Core, which was a huge success at the end of October. And so we're going to play that video right now, I believe. Wonderful day. We look forward to it every year. I know David gets us into this, you know, morning talk show crowd rally in front of the school, which is always a lot of fun. We go live from multiple schools, but it's really to promote positive in the district. I know Mr. Salee was heavily involved, Dr. Bazey Gates, and many others. So I want to thank them. But it's one of those positive, where we go on tour across the district and just highlighting positive things. And, you know, things like bullying prevention, you know, awareness, anti-vaping, other things that we can do better and work together to support one another. Mental health is another big part of it as well. We have one other video. I know it came up in discussion before, but we had a wonderful tree planting that occurred at Salina. And we're also gained by writing, we're getting a grant there. $1.5 million was awarded for green schools. So we're very pleased there. So we'll play this other video.
This little beautiful gem of a property has been home to immigrants, to people coming to find a better life here. It has a rich history of over 100 years. People have come here for great opportunities and so many of them have not left. This is a really special, special place. And it is our goal to make it even more beautiful by greening it up. So we have a vision here in the Salina community to bring more trees, to help with the challenges that we face with the air, and also to create a natural playscape for our children to be outdoors because it is twofold. We know that green spaces help with flood mitigation, with helping with the air. And we also know that we need to bring childhood back outdoors for our children.
In addition to working with Salina and Dearborn schools for this particular planting as our planting partner, Michigan works with DTE Foundation as our funding partner. We may disagree on particular things, but we see everything the same with regards to plant. Number one, trees grow their own food. Soil is abundant around us. They have soil, that's where the minerals are. That's how they work. The one thing that must be provided for them is water. You want to plant high. Because if it's too high, it won't die, okay? If it's too low, it won't grow, okay? Remember that. Water and air. The rest of it, we can take care of, says the tree.
Seeing the trees and the greenery and everything takes fruition is been a blessing. So thank you, everyone, for all your support and your help. And we really appreciate everyone being here today.
It's a community of dedicated people, caring and passionate people. I can't thank you enough. This is really appreciated more than you would ever know.
So, okay, so I'm going to move along. I got a couple of things under other, but we're very happy with, you know, our green schools and the things that the initiatives were taking. I'm going to call up Mr. Silver, Mr. Grulick, who's going to come up. We, I know a lot of people are here today for this as well. We're very disappointed with what happened with the Etzel Ford volleyball team. I called MHSAA myself from Washington when I was there for our Blue Ribbon Schools. I tried to, you know, plead with them. Is there any way to allow the players to play, the students who, to no fault of their own, you know, let them play? And they just were not, they said they can't. You know, it's a black and white rule and they just leave. I'll let Mr. Silver comment on that, though.
Okay, thanks, everybody. I'm here today to just kind of talk about the unfortunate incident that we incurred that these ladies here had to go through last week from the Etzel Ford volleyball team. It was discovered and reported to the MHSAA that the Etzel Ford volleyball program had exceeded the number of maximum dates of competition. So we have a kind of a guideline we go by for every sport. And volleyball is allowed to have 18 dates of competition. And they can have up to four scrimmages also. It was discovered that Etzel had gone to 19 dates of competition. The MHSAA has no gray area. There's no appeals process. We've experienced this in a lot of different issues or local schools have ran into things in different sports. And the spirit of the rule in the MHSAA's defense is basically they want to level playing field with us. They don't want a school from a wealthier area to be able to compete in 30 days of competition and then maybe lesser school districts that don't have the budget, they can only compete in eight or something. So that's the purpose of the 18 dates of competition. In my opinion, the punishment doesn't fit the crime for this. And it's very unfortunate. You could do much more egregious violations and not get punished this bad. So basically, the rule is if you go over the 18 dates of competition, you have to forfeit your matches in the district. So that's basically, it's the end of your season. You're done. There's no appeal process. What had happened in this particular situation is on August 21st, the girls had played in a quad. It was the first date of competition. We thought it was a scrimmage. It wasn't a scrimmage. So it was reported as a date of competition. Okay. I'm not making excuses when I talk about this to kind of throw in the perfect storm. The volleyball for MHSAA for the very first year is using an NPR system. It's been in place for basketball for a few years. Football has a playoff point average. Basketball started with an NPR system, which is kind of a strength of schedule thing. So if you play tougher teams and you beat them, your NPR score goes up. And that is used now for the very first year to seed the district. So what they want to do is get the number one seed, which these Etzel girls are the number one seed in the district. They want to separate the number one seed and number two seed. In the past, you would just do a random draw and those two teams could meet in the very first night of competition. The idea is to try to get them into the district finals and get the two best teams at the end. So this whole thing stinks. It's very personal to me as the Etzel AD before Mike. I know, I've known most of these girls for a while and I've known a lot of their families. They're special, okay? They're wonderful volleyball players, just wonderful. And they've done great things. They tied for the Downriver League Championship this year for the first time. They, they're amazing to watch. They're just so much fun. But more than that, you ought to see these girls' grades. They are like the poster child for what you want as student athletes in this district. The last like three or four years, they volunteered to run the middle school championship game for us at Etzel. Did a great job, made sure those middle school kids had a great experience. You know, they worked the scorer's tables and line judges and they do a great job. I hear this all the time. I have a daughter in eighth grade who is majorly into volleyball. That's her thing. And I hear it every day. She wants to go to Etzel Ford and play volleyball. And honestly, it's because of an amazing coach, a great coaching staff. But also, when she's around, these girls are great role models. They're awesome. She's bugging me all the time to come to games and it's hard for us to work it in our schedule. But we need to do better. We need to have better checks and balances. I'm kind of emotional talking about this because you girls are great. You are. You always have been. You're a special group. And you guys are going to be successes no matter what you do, all of you. And it just really hurts, especially you seniors, you know, to see you go out like this. But we have to do a better job. And I know it'll never happen again, but we let them down as adults. And I guess that's all I have to say. Is there any questions or anything?
So question. You mentioned that this is not going to happen again. So what checks and balances are we doing to make sure this is not going to happen again?
Being that this is a new system with the NPR system, the MHSAA asks you to double check like two weeks before the districts to just kind of double check everything. What makes it more difficult in volleyball is, okay, for instance, basketball, they have a maximum of 22 dates of competition, or 22 games, actually. And it's very easy to check. There's 22 on the MHSAA schedule. It's very easy to add up. In volleyball, it gets a little bit more complicated because these girls go to invitationals on Saturdays. And they may play five different teams on a Saturday. So now we have to kind of back up and just basically check dates. It's, like I said, it's, I'm not making excuses because that's disrespecting the girls. It just, we, I can guarantee that the coach is going to be more involved with it, the AD will be. And we'll just make sure of it. And part of it, too, like in my energy, is making sure that everybody's educated in how we need to do these procedures and checks. But again, we let a great group of girls down.
Any questions here? Trustee Watts?
How many seniors do we have on the team?
I believe there's six. Is there six?
And the reason I ask is because I know a lot of the times that we wait for banquets and whatnot because we want to see how the season ends. So what have, because of this error, because we did not, what are they missing out on?
Championships.
They had a.
But do we have, like, do we have a senior night? Like, are those things that we have been waiting for, did our seniors have that? Okay. Then, and also seniors, you can sit down. Thank you. I don't want you to stand too long. Also, then I'm thinking, like, as a senior, my daughter plays volleyball. So I understand the camps and knowing which camps and knee pads and not having the shoes and all of that that goes into volleyball. But also thinking as a senior and as a parent as a senior, not having this game, what does that look like? And is it, what sort of jeopardy does it have post-high school for our senior players? So something that I'm thinking as a parent, like, what does that look like for scholarships or campus recruiting or?
To be completely honest with, most volleyball recruiting nowadays is done through club volleyball. Yes, you might have an occasional coach come out to a high school game, like a high-profile game. But in general, the high school season isn't a major factor like it is in other sports as far as recruiting. What they missed out on is an experience to win a district championships. And they were seeded number one in the district. So on paper, they were favored to win it. Doesn't mean that always goes through, but I think these girls would have won it.
And I think with, to second what Trustee Mosip had said, I think we need to have a transparent process so that we make sure this doesn't happen. So yes, double checking it. But I think it needs to be that as a district, we not only make sure that this doesn't happen for our volleyball girls, but going for every sports, we need to have a check and balance system that it is completely transparent. So if we said, hey, this has happened before, how can we make sure it does not, we guarantee it does not happen again? I know there are no guarantees, but it has to be transparent so we can make sure that our seniors or any of our students are not then robbed of this experience for a championship game. So.
I agree with you 100%.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Well, there is no amount of apologies that's going to make it better for these girls and what they've lost. So there isn't anything I can say that will make you feel better or give you back what you earned and were not able to experience. But my heart goes out to you. I had two daughters who went to Etzel Ford. One was a field hockey player for all her four years there. I understand the drive and passion when you're involved in an athletic sport. And I too would like to say that, because here tonight, we've heard about two different athletic experiences that did not go well for the district of Dearborn and that we need to probably do a good overhaul of our procedures. and that we need to probably do a good overhaul of our procedures and guidelines across the board at every high school level and make sure that we do right because if we're really into students first, we better be into students first. And I cannot understand how we keep on failing in ways that should be fairly easily remedied and, and watched. So, I, I do hope that we go back to the drawing board here and we find all those errors and those loopholes and all the other failures that we can add up to in, I'm not going to excuse human behavior, but it's the truth, everybody makes mistakes. But we can do better and we should be doing better and I really truly am sorry for these girls and that their season ended in such a poor way.
Mr. Silver, a question for you. At what point do like a head coach or athletic director find out if their team is still in the running for districts or not? It's not, it can't be a last-minute decision.
No, it's basically, it's when, if it is discovered, okay? If it would, if this wouldn't...
No, I'm not talking about what was discovered, I'm talking about, I had a good friend of mine that serves in the district way northwest of here. He shot to me, I mean, he was sad and he did tell me that the school, he said the district, but I imagine the school should have heard almost two weeks before the season was over if your team is still in the running for districts?
Yeah, everybody makes a district tournament.
Everybody makes this, yeah. But I mean, if, if something like that came up, shouldn't that have been reported from the state? You don't have to answer that. All I'm going to say is, before I make my comment, it's nobody in this room, so nobody, something like that. You use the word sucks, I hate that word, but I'm going to say it, adults suck. Adults are very close to us, they suck. You know, I'm not taking, take away from my, my colleague, my great colleague here, an apology, I'm not going to apologize, I'm going to tell you how I feel. I've watched you young ladies play. I am heartbroken for you. You got cheated. Mr. Silver said, a high-profile game, it doesn't get any higher profile than a regional championship. I've been there, watched how young people perform, you deserve to be there. But, this is a life lesson for you. I know I'm probably going to hear from you, from some of you tonight, I welcome it, but let me tell you something. You will be better people who are just experienced, it'll make you stronger, more resilient. May, maybe these words don't mean anything to you right now, but they will later on. But to tell you something, in my book, you are champions.
I just want to add too that I, I feel horrible as well, which is why, you know, my daughter's a volleyball player collegiate right now and played high school and very important. My son's involved in sports as well and I was trying to get them at MHSA to, to basically come down on us as adults and they wouldn't do it. But I, we really did try and I feel horrible for you because I have two children and I understand how important the volleyball is to my daughter as well. So, very, very sorry we couldn't rectify this and we're going to make sure this doesn't happen again. We're going to have protocols across the district for double checks on these schedules with this new system.
President Barry.
Trustee Torp?
I would just add that you did nothing wrong.
Absolutely not.
It was other people that did something wrong and you're the ones that have to pay the price. And like it was already stated, it sucks, it really does, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know Principal Hassan's here as well to support our girls, so thank you. All right, I'm going to move along, I just had a couple other things under other. I just want to mention today was Veterans Day, I want to just thank all those who have served to protect our nation and our freedoms and we want to thank our veterans across the US for the great service they've done supporting us throughout, throughout the country to ensure we have freedoms. The last thing I just want to mention is I want to thank all those who ran for the school board election, thank you for running. I know that's very important and it's very emotional to get, be part of that process. And I want to thank Jamal, or excuse me, I want to congratulate our new elected board members, Jamal Aljamie and Amr Zar. Thank you.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Hello everyone, my name is Ahmed Kadeh and I will be doing commendations from Dearborn Magnet High School. Commendations to 24 high school students who received special accolades through the College Board's National Recognition Program. To be recognized, students must have a B+ or higher cumulative GPA by the time of submission and have either placed in the top 10% in their state on the Fall's 2023 PSAT tests or scored a three or higher on two or more AP exams in ninth and 10th grade. These students must also identify as one or more of the following. A first-generation college student, Black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino, Native or American, or a 10-day school in a rural area or small town. Commendations to Etzel Ford High School student Maria Alkutsi, who competed in the Michigan Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association Meet. Alkutsi broke her own school record within the 200-meter with a time of two minutes and finished fourth overall. She also finished third overall in the 500 freestyle with a time of 5 minutes and 7 seconds. Alkutsi also qualified for the MHSA Division One State Meet, which will take place on November 22nd and 23rd in Holland. Commendations to Etzel Ford High School sophomore John Harrison, who came in first place at the Downriver League Tennis Championship in Singles. Commendation to the Etzel Ford Boys Varsity Soccer Team for winning their third consecutive district championships and for winning their Confederate title. Commendations to Etzel Ford High School Counseling Department for organizing a successful college and career fair for the Dearborn community. More than 20 colleges and trade schools approved or provided information for students and parents. Commendations to the Dearborn High Marching Band, which earned a superior rating at the MSBOA Marching Band Festival held in October. Commendations to the Etzel Ford High Varsity Volleyball Team for winning their league championships. Moving on to middle schools, commendations to Abdul Khardi. The Salina Intermediate Teacher noticed a student choking and immediately intervened, administering the high-end leg maneuver. The student was then able to breathe again and potentially, I'm sorry, and possibly more... And avoided a possibly much more serious situation. Commendations to Lindberg Elementary, which was one of only four leader-in-me schools in the country to make both the program's Lighthouse Academic Honorary roles. Lindberg made one list for being in the 87th percentile for overall academic performance and the other list for improving its percentile score by six points compared to 2023. Leader-in-me is a program that nurtures students' leadership and success based on Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People.
Thank you very much, great job.
Next speaker, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Trustee Barry, can I?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, trustee Moses.
Okay. Just commendations to Mr. Kevin Barkoff of Dearborn High School for actually helping my son during the Supriano Run. Malik was too excited to run for that race and he, he fainted. So, Mr. Barkoff was nearby and helped him regain his conscience. So, thank you to Mr. Barkoff and everybody who helped at the Supriano Run, it was an amazing race, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Is your son okay?
Yeah, he's good.
Good evening. The following donations have been offered to the school district, acceptance of these donations are requested at this time. A donation of $6,629.47 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for the Tractor Cafe. A donation of $562.50 has been offered to McCullough-UNIS School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a fourth-grade publishing project. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a writer-in-residency program. A donation of $125 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a light box for art. A donation of $572.25 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for classroom books. A donation of $3,000 has been offered to Duval Elementary School by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a kiln. A donation of $4,180 has been offered to Salina Intermediate by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a science subscription. A donation of $20,000 has been offered to Michael Berry Career Center by the Dearborn Ed Foundation in partnership with Ford to be used for robotics. A donation of a 2023 Ford Transit 250 has been offered to Etzel Ford High by Ford Motor Company to be used in the automotive program for training. And finally, a donation of $600 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Eastbourne Market to be used for pumpkins for the Fall Fest.
Great, thank you and thank you to all our donors, very generous community.